Jason, would you start us?
Good evening, God. We thank you for this beautiful time that you've allowed us to come together. I thank you for your will that's been done here in Montevista. We thank you for your will that's been done in the San Luis Valley. God, we ask that you will make your plan perfect.
You need a roll call?
Counselor Howard?
Here.
Counselor Lorenz?
Here.
Counselor Watson?
Here.
Mayor Protem Segala?
Here.
Mayor Becker?
Here.
A quorum has been declared.
Do we have any modifications to the agenda?
No, sir.
Okay, approval of consent agenda, minutes of regular meeting from May sixteenth, twenty twenty four, and review and approval of counts payable.
We'll do approve the consent agenda.
Been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda for the minutes of regular meeting from May sixteenth, twenty twenty four, and a review and approval of counts payable. Is there any more discussion? You need a?
Counselor Howard?
Yes.
Counselor Lorenz?
Yes.
Counselor Watson?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Segala?
Aye.
Mayor Becker?
Aye.
Motion carries to approve the consent agenda.
Okay, we got proclamations, communications, and appointments. Appointing Mark Wagner to the Montevista Tree Board. Does anybody got that?
Mister Mayor? Sorry, go ahead, city manager.
So Mark is a is an employee of CSU's forestry, and so he helped plant a couple of the trees for Arbor Day a couple of weeks ago, and he thinks he'll be a great addition.
All right, make a motion to appoint Mark Wagner to the Montevista Tree Board.
Second. Moved and seconded to appoint Mark Wagner to the Montevista Tree Board. Is there any discussion? You need a?
Counselor Howard?
Yes.
Counselor Lorenz?
Yes.
Counselor Watson?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Segala?
Aye.
Mayor Becker?
Aye.
Motion carries to appoint Mark Wagner to the Montevista Tree Board.
Okay, we'll move on to citizen comments and special presentations. Uh, citizen comments, city council walk-in, your unscheduled comments, please limit your comments to three minutes, and councils will not take action at this same meeting. Yes, sir. Step up there, there should be a paper up there for you to put your name on. Say your name when you're ready.
Jer, me, Gardner? Need the address, is that okay to leave link? Yes, it's okay?
Yes.
Okay, sorry. Um, do I? I don't, I apologize.
Okay, go ahead and go.
You say what you want. So, hi, I'm here, I wanted to kind of just read and talk about police corruption, I had asked, um, you needed to email, as was requested for a lot of time, which did not happen this, um, meeting, so for chance, we can reuse that next time. Um, so I just thought I'd come show my face and introduce myself, I'm Jeremy Garner. Uh, I live in Alamosa, but I did spend a lot of my time here in Al, uh, Monte Vista, uh, that's where I grew a love and fascination for, uh, potatoes, so, um, I don't exactly agree with everything that is done in this city council, but as a, you know, member of society and I'm a US citizen, uh, I just thought it'd be fair for me to give my view of where the police have been dishonest. Um, and how that kind of just goes against what is truth and honesty, and I I was a bit bizarre and kind of throwback, but you guys did a prayer before your city council meeting too, you like with the parade and stuff, and I don't know if you got to read the newspaper, but it did ask for the removal of the, uh, Lord's Prayer, and that's what I hope next time, uh, we can give me some more time to actually speak on. But police corruption in general outside the Lord's Prayer is a very serious topic, and we've seen that across our own nation, and unfortunately, if you know the statistics, maybe if you've actually heard some other people like from Australia, another first world nation, they've gained a lot of, uh, wealth and stuff, it's the Baptists move it from the eighteen hundreds, but still those people that I have re, uh, looked into and gotten their opinion of what they think police are in America, it's quite sad and disturbing that they can recognize statistics better than a lot of Americans do themselves. And what's further disturbing to me is that most Americans, and I share this with my jewelry teacher, that ninety-nine percent of officers being good is actually made of math, and if you are, actually go behind to see who made up this false map, it was the officers who created this false map, and my teacher, jewelry teacher from C and M Central in Mexico, she was surprised because that was something she truly feels is not even true. And I asked her first, do you believe in that slogan? Do you believe it's true in society? Her answers were yes, and I said, would it, would it blow your mind to think adversely that the officers create that? To more so sells T-shirts, to more so gain public trust, not because that is the truth of statistics, but because hey, it works. So that's why I'm kind of like, hey, that's the American that I've seen research, and even respectfully look towards Australians, um, which, you know, that's red, white, and blue, they were abolitionist. We wanted to be abolitionist beginning, didn't choose that, so we chose red, white, and blue, so, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Any other citizen comments?
Good evening, Council, my name is Bob Richards. Yeah. This is the last council meeting that you guys will have while I'm still uh, leasing the theaters, and so I wanted to, first of all, just make myself available in case you had any questions about sort of what's happened the last year or moving forward. Um, I haven't really spoken to or seen you guys since that special meeting that we had, so I'm here to make myself av- available for that if you have any questions, but before we get to those questions, I, I have a question of the council. And this is, uh, more in my capacity as the radio station owner and general manager, and that is there have been a number of, um, smaller towns, municipalities, cities in the state that have made declarative statements recently and even held votes about whether or not they would consider themselves a sanctuary city. And if they did, they outlined sort of what their plan was, where the money was coming from, that sort of thing. And if they didn't, they were, uh, very uh, forthright about the fact that they weren't a sanctuary city. I'm just wondering, I haven't been to a council meeting in, in a year, because I have been busy with the theaters, but I'm just wondering if we have done that here in Montevista, if we plan to make a statement, and the reason I'm asking that question is because as the weather changes and it's getting warmer, the chances of, um, uh, immigrants, undocumented immigrants coming here uh, may be greater, and so I sort of am wondering what the plan is if that's the case.
They have a big on there to now the sanctuaries.
Yeah, yeah, definitely, that could sound like these often start out good, saying, don't send anybody there.
Okay.
Positive stance against that.
Yeah.
Okay.
Three months, three months ago, three, four months.
Was, was that at a council meeting?
Yes.
Yes, yeah, great, all right.
Yeah, Gigi did, she got on top of sending something on.
Excellent.
Yeah.
I will get with Gigi and find out what meeting that was, and I'll go look it up online. Thank you for that. Any questions about the theater?
Thanks, no, honestly, I am all out of questions.
Fair enough, me too.
I don't know that it's appropriate to talk about it during public, the public comment, since that's where you signed up, Bob, but, um, I'll bring it up then in my report, I don't know if you can hang around that long or not.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you, Bob.
Any other citizen comments?
So, okay, speak about the theater?
Yes, sir. Put your name down, speak your name when you start talking, Chris.
Okay, uh, my name is Chris Shulte, the pastor of Altrich Sanri. Um, so, both of you know, you know, we, uh, where the other, our church was the other person trying to, to get the theater, and, uh, we were unsuccessful in that. Um, we really felt at that time that, you know, we had something to offer that would be beneficial to the community, even though we know that, you know, wouldn't be as, as the tax issue was an issue, that, you know, we don't, we pay taxes. Um, but now we do have an individual, um, who is a businessman, a member of our community, who is trying to, and he couldn't be here tonight, he's out of town, um, who's trying to purchase the theater, and, um, you know, from everything that I have been able to establish, he's, he's very successful in the businesses that he has operated, um, he had two businesses in Michigan, very successful. Um, he's, he's, um, got a lot of really great ideas, um, for the theater. Again, things that will benefit the community. He will be able to bring some taxes, you know, because he will, he will be a business. Um, he also is going to allow, um, kind of like Bob did, he was very gracious to allow us to have events that was very, very great, great partnership. He's going to allow us to, uh, to be able to do that as well, utilize the theater for some events and some Christian events. Um, but what I can, it, it seems like, and what I can, can tell is now there's some contention about that and the very fact that he, uh, is would be in partnership with us, that some have been opposed to that, and I just want to say, um, you know, I, I just want to express, you know, my concern if, if those alternate voices, you know, persuade you not to allow him to, to go forward with the theater, uh, it'd just be, it'd be very discouraging. Um, again, it, it won't be the church that has it, it will be a business person who will, I think, bring great, um, something, something very beneficial to the, to the city, and our church will also be able to utilize that best space to bring something beneficial to the city. Um, and so I'll just encourage, uh, to, to listen to that and, and take, take his offer seriously and, and not, not be discouraged by those voices who are concerned about what, what might, you know, what might might come with the theater, that it'll be too Christian or something like that. I think that, um, John Myers is going to do a great job, and I just wanted to speak on his, his behalf, that that, uh, it will be something very, very good, and, uh, it's not, uh, not something to be be concerned about, I mean, I know that many in the community might be, but, um, I think it'll be, be something good.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we'll go on to, uh, scheduled appearances, although we have none. Um, ordinances. Second reading ordinance number nine-two-seven repealing and reenacting provisions of the Montevista Municipal Code relating to the Board of Adjustments. Who's doing that? You didn't hear us?
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor and Council, thank you. Um, so just to, uh, go back a little, uh, I think all of you know what this is basically all about. At this point, we've got a lot of, um, inconsistencies in the code concerning the Board of Adjustment presently, this tries to, um, remove those inconsistencies and get the BOA down to what it's really all about, and not to, um, be redundant as, uh, the present, uh, provisions are. So we did put some time into this and effort, um, and, um, tried to bring all those provisions in, we were also mindful of the state statute and where it comes from, uh, and that's one reason that, uh, we suggested, uh, five people to the Board of Adjustment. Um, the Board of Adjustment, as we, you know, talked about, is a entity that uh, can be appealed to from an order of the, uh, staff administration, um, of about, uh, the interpretation or, uh, final decision on any land use matter. Uh, and, uh, it's an independent board. Uh, it is, um, almost universally set up, as far as I can tell, in all municipalities. It is, uh, called for by the state statute. Um, and, uh, you would end up appointing a, uh, a five-member board, we suggested in this after discussing it as staff, that, uh, one of those people should probably be, or could prob- probably be a, uh, member of the planning commission for the sake of liaison and, uh, consistency and continuum, uh, of, of where you're going with all your land use regulations. Um, and, uh, I think you would want that person with full voting rights because, uh, what's printed in the statute about the Board of Adjustment is that, uh, it takes four people to, um, allow a variance, and that's principally what the Board of Adjustment does, is variance. Um, and so, uh, that would mean if you, uh, don't allow that one person to, uh, ex-official member to vote, that, uh, it would take, uh, always a continuous vote, in other words, a, a yes vote, uh, on all members present, all members. It, it, it requires four members to, uh, reverse a decision. And that's because you're varying the code when you do this too, and the code should only be varied under certain circumstances. So, um, this is the, uh, second and last reading of the, uh, ordinance. Um, amending the Board of Adjustment provisions. This would end up going into the, uh, uh, code itself, uh, and integrated into that as we're revising the code, so probably you would have also a different numbering than what this is by the time we get through with that, but these are the basic provisions of the code. So, somebody have any questions in there? You know, submit that to you as, um, for, uh, second and final reading.
I make a motion to adopt ordinance nine-twenty-seven repealing and enacting provisions of the Montevista Municipal Code relating to the Board of Adjustment in second reading.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded to approve ordinance nine-two-seven repealing and reacting, reenacting provisions of the Montevista Municipal Code relating to the Board of Adjustments on second reading. Is there any discussion? You need a?
Yes, sir. Counselor Howard?
Aye.
Counselor Howard?
Yes.
Can you guys hear me, Counselor Howard?
Oh.
Yes.
We can hear you. Yes.
Counselor Howard?
Will you take?
He said, will you take the rule?
Yes, I will be happy to take the vote, or this. The vote, Counselor Howard?
Yes.
Uh, Counselor?
Watson?
No, we go in. Lorenz?
Yes.
Counselor?
Counselor Howard?
Yes.
And?
Stuck a weak link.
Uh, Mayor Protem Segala?
Yes.
And Mayor?
Yes.
All right, that passes five to zero. Hey, DJ, would you please run back and see, see Brandon, what's the problem with her? Thank you. Sorry, it's just a little discombobulated tonight.
Well, at least she got to go to Vegas. Yeah. We can handle one better.
I need DJ back in here for his.
Yes, yeah, it's a unique issue, it's on our computer, that's a problem. Brandon can hear it just fine.
Okay, we'll go to, uh, contracts, agreements, and leases. Lisa, award of Colorado Division Aeronautics Small Dollar Grant?
So, we're here for Rob today, because he's out, um, and apologies, I normally feel I'm off today too, but I've blown my kind of um, so, this is for the airport, it's an entitlement grant, um, we've already selected, we've already done the, the RFP process. Um, so this, we just need to have signed so that we can move forward with the grant application. We don't anticipate any problems, as long as they go through and they appropriate it, then there should be no issues, there's a very minuscule chance that we wouldn't get it based off of that. So that's what he asked me to come to that. So I just need you guys to have a motion to pass, or to allow Mayor Becker to sign the small model, small dollar grant award. Grant.
Some work.
And I have a question now, so what is this supposed to be used for, DJ?
Uh, this is Taxway. Taxway.
Okay, thank you. Yeah.
Second. No one knows it.
Moved and seconded to, uh, for the mayor sign the award, award of the Colorado Division Aeronautics Small Dollar Grant. Is there any discussion? You want to try, you need, or you want to do it?
Nope, I want to do it.
Okay.
Counselor Howard?
Yes.
Lorenz?
Yes.
Counselor Watson?
Aye.
Counselor, pro, Mr. Protem Segala?
Aye.
And Mister Mayor?
Aye.
That passes five, zero.
Okay, you got one more chance. The word contract for architectural and engineering services for Sky High EOC to Davis Engineering Service.
Uh, so this is for the design of the showers and the backup, or not, not the backup, sorry, backup generation, this is showers in the RV park landscape and design for the RV park itself, as well as water and power design engineering for the bathrooms. Uh, Davis Engineering came in, um, I believe they were the lowest bidder, which we actually provided you with the bidding documents.
Well, that looks like they don't here.
I have a copy of it, you know, I do.
Yeah, they went the lowest.
Um,
Looks like here are the highest.
Um, we chose them based off of their capacity to do what they're local, we have a pretty tight timeline to get it started and finished, because we have a pretty tight timeline for um, construction and getting everything completed to finish out the grant. Um, so having some local, number one, we, we like to have, uh, they have understanding of the project, they understand the ground, understand the environment, um, and they've done work with us in the past. Um, they had very few subs, and then we had two subcontractors in the entire project, which we were really concerned with the timeline, because one of them had, I think, nine subcontractors, and we were worried that they can do all the coordination to bring them in, to make it work, um, because we want to get this completed so we can start construction next spring, um, so that was one of the, that was the reason why we chose Davis, it was, um, the only one that we were very, very added not to take was K L J Engineering. Um, we have worked with them on two separate projects, and we're just less than pleased with their projects. They're typically pushing for more money, larger project, um, for communication, just not excited about them, that is why we did not choose them, and they were the lowest bidder.
You talked a little bit about what it went into the scorecards.
Um, so the scorecards went into their knowledge, their knowledge of the, of the, of the project itself, historical projects, pricing, and there's one more piece on, there was four sections to grade.
But we couldn't take, when we talk, so all of this is under that the grant or the congressional earmark that we got. And so part of the criteria, we couldn't take into consideration the pricing side of things. And so they've, they've had some movement up in Denver through the, so it's a FEMA grant that's administered through the Colorado Department of Homeland Security. And so we're having to work with them and do it on the state's scale instead of doing it more locally. And so they came back and said we couldn't base it on, on the dollar figures at all.
And we start with the original scoring because we'd issued the RFP, we've been reaching out to FEMA, and reaching out, and reaching out, and weren't able to get any responses. Um, and then one person said, yeah, go ahead and issue the RFP, and didn't ask to review it, so we did. And then when they came back and we had all the results back, they're like, well, you can't account for that. Well, we already put out that this is what we were going to score it on, so we scored it on with that. And then we selected based off of what we thought was best qualified and can meet the timeline.
What was the grant for? How much was the grant?
It was, uh, like eight-hundred-and-seventy-three thousand dollars.
So this is a part of that?
Mm-hmm. Yeah. This is a part of that, and then the rest of the funding to make the match, we didn't have to match it with twenty-five percent, and so that came from DOLA. And then to, uh, part of it, we're using some of our American Rescue Funds, and then to foundations.
So are we just looking for a vote to move forward on this? Maybe a motion toward the country?
Yeah, north, move toward the country.
Did you just pick one?
No, you are.
Oh, I make a motion to award the grant.
It's like, sound like you did.
So, uh, on the, but you don't have yours up, so there's a suggestion motion on there, on your packet, in the memorandum. You want it?
It's on your paper.
Very bottom in bold?
Oh, please. And last, I move to award the Tony Tong for, oh, for architectural and engineering services for the Sky High EOC to Davis Engineering Services and to enter into a contract for those services as listed in Part One, RB Part Three, sum of fifty-one thousand, two hundred dollars and no cents, and Part Two. Restroom shower for a sum of eighty-three thousand dollars and no cents, and to allow G D Dennis, City Manager, to sign the contract.
I'll second that.
Sorry, I understand, I think I got a pro link away from you.
To approve, uh, architectural engineer service for Sky High to Davis Engineering and have the city manager sign. Is there any discussion?
Counselor Howard?
Yes.
Counselor Lorenz?
Yes.
Counselor Watson? Mayor Protem Segala?
Aye.
And Mayor Becker?
Aye.
All right, motion passes five to zero to to give the contract awarded to Davis Engineering for the shower and RV design in Sky High Park, and allow G G to sign the contract.
Thank you. April financials, Judy Phillips.
Good evening, Council. Um, first of all, just want to say I'm sorry that you haven't seen anything yet for twenty twenty-four, we're going to remedy that tonight. Um, uh, part of the reason for something new is retirement, um, the early audit that we had, and then me trying to get my feet on the floor. We've had to wait till now, so. Um, in your packet, you should have had a report, um, I'm just going to quickly go through a few comments, um, with the car point. Uh, since it's completed thirty-three point three percent of the twenty twenty-four fiscal year, this report will be for April. How do I click? Okay. And okay, thank you, oh.
I think
okay. The cash balance in the main checking account for the general fund is two million, seven-hundred-and-sixty-eight thousand, seventy-four dollars. In the water fund, three-hundred-and-ninety-two thousand, seven-hundred-and-twenty-one dollars, and sewer fund, one million, thirty-nine thousand, eight-hundred-and-thirteen dollars. Um, as of April, revenue in excess of expenditures in the general fund is two-hundred-and-twenty-seven thousand, six-hundred-and-thirty-six dollars, water fund, twenty thousand, five-hundred-and-forty dollars, and sewer fund, one-hundred-and-twenty-seven thousand, twenty-four dollars. Total expenditures as a percent of the approved budget amounts, uh, general fund, uh, is thirty-two percent, water fund nineteen percent, and sewer fund is twenty percent. So things so far through April are doing pretty well. Um, balance sheet, uh, go through accounts receivable a little bit. In comparison to April of twenty twenty-three, the general fund has increased its accounts receivable by two-hundred-and-eighteen thousand, six-hundred-and-thirty-four dollars, and that's due primarily to property tax, sales taxing, and franchise tax receivables. The most notable is the increase in property tax over twenty twenty-three, and we also received, um, are in receipt, um, we've been notified how much we're going to get anyway, of the Senate Bill twenty-two, two-thirty-eight reimbursement from the state. Um, that's amounting to approximately a hundred and ten thousand dollars. Um, the water fund has, uh, increased its receivable, uh, mainly due to utility billings and a slight increase in tax liens, and also a correction for the allowance for doubtful accounts. Sewer fund, uh, had an increase in accounts receivable of twenty thousand, five-hundred-and-eighty-five dollars, and that was related to utility billings as well, um, and a small increase in tax needs. Uh, accounts payable, uh, general fund saw a decrease of seven thousand dollars due to the timing of month-end dispersment of employee retirement. Uh, accounts payable, uh, general funds saw a decrease of seven thousand dollars due to the timing of month end dispersment of employee retirement last April. So that was pretty much the only change there. Uh, water fund and sewer fund were showing minimal change over last year. Uh, revenues, general fund increase overall, three hundred and seven thousand, six hundred and eighty-six dollars over last year at this time. Uh, tax revenue, property tax reimbursement, uh, property tax, Rayburn County and city sales tax amount two hundred and seventy-nine thousand, hundred and eighty-five dollars of that. Um, we've used ARPA funds for two boiler units, mosquito sprayer and, and PD lighting, which amounted to fifty-five thousand. Uh, federal grants for the PD drug testing equipment and recruitment and retention amounted to seventy-five thousand dollars. So that was pretty much what, uh, took place for that increase in the general fund. Uh, the water fund overall increase was twenty-nine thousand, two hundred and thirty-nine and related pretty much just increase in charges for services. Uh, sewer fund. Um, about one hundred and fifty-five thousand, nine hundred and seventy-eight, it's related to. Um, we received state grant funds for the wastewater system improvement. That was for the engineering side of it, forty-three thousand, six hundred and sixteen dollars. And we increased charges for services of about a hundred and ten thousand, and interest and miscellaneous went up slightly. Uh, month-to-month revenues. We've had our average revenues per month are amount to four hundred and fifty-three thousand, five hundred and twenty-four dollars per month. Uh, property accounts, property tax accounts for the increases in February, February and April. Along with the property tax reimbursement from Senate Bill twenty-two to thirty-eight. Um, looking at taxes. Uh, the general property tax revenue continues pretty much to follow a similar pattern from the past with just a slight increase in March and April. Uh, Rayburn County, uh. Sales tax revenues coming in somewhat lower than projected estimates. However, the last actual was higher, so hopefully things are looking up there. Now, the city sales tax, with the exception of the spike in March twenty-two. City sales tax revenue appears to be on a slight upward increase from compared to prior years, so. And I guess. I'm sure you've all seen these slides before, these are based on four years now, so. Thank goodness I need to put this video, it's, it's very, very informative. Uh, total tax revenue, that includes all taxes, property tax, sales tax, specific ownership tax, franchise tax, occupational tax. The pattern for the first quarter twenty twenty-four shows fairly consistent trend with the spike in April due to the receipt of the tax reimbursement we got from the state on Senate Bill twenty-two, twenty-eight. Expenditures, uh, again, we're going to compare to last year at this time. Overall expenditures in the general fund have increased through April due to the police department finally being fully staffed. But, um, after the extreme shortage we had last year. We did increase staff at Sky High. We've had an increase in wages and benefits in all departments, um. Specifically, health insurance increased. Um, we had an increase in general liability insurance. We did purchase the drug testing equipment, boiler units, lighting for PD, H fat for tower. And holiday lights, all of which were reimbursed through donations or grants. Um, water fund increase was due to wages and benefits pretty much. Uh, increase in general liability insurance, and then some lab expenses for testing when, when the. Sewer fund, again, wages and benefits, increase in general liability insurance. And we did have the engineering expenses that I talked about earlier that were reimbursed through grant funds. General fund expenditures averaged four hundred and twenty-eight thousand, eight hundred and thirty-nine dollars per month over the last four months. And last slide. Um, comparing the monthly budgeted amounts to expenditures. We're at thirty-three point three percent of the budget year again, we are under budget by one percent in the general fund. And all of the other departments are in line or and with or under budget at this time. So that's pretty good news for now. Um, we have a current ratio of three point nine five dollars, uh, of assets for every one dollar is currently abilities. And we currently have eight point two nine months of operating expenses in the general funds total in the signed. Any questions? I'm learning a lot. I know I have a lot yet to go, but, uh, I just sincerely thank Anita for, uh, all of her work. Was a good trainer and I hope ways to go, it's all going well.
Do you like us to approve your April financial?
I should ask for you to please approve when you complain.
Make motion to approve the April financial that presented.
Been moved in, seconded to approve April financials, is there any discussion?
G G.
Councilman Howard.
Yes.
Council, Councilman Lorenz.
Yes.
Councilman Watson.
Aye.
Council, uh, Mr. Pre. Mayor Pro Tam Sagala.
Yes.
Makes it so, look so easy, doesn't it?
I know what, Mayor Becker.
Aye.
All right, that motion carries five to zero to approve the April finances as presented. Thank you, thank you Judy.
Okay, we'll move on to staff proposals, reports and actions. Police Department. So, we call you chief right now?
Right here, Council, um. But obviously Chief King Feller's gone, so it's been some differences adjusting on our end. Um, I think we're doing well, uh, got no complaints from the guys, but we did. Try and tweak a few things, made some different trainings of priority. Um, but overall, I think, you know, the PD's, um. Doing well, um, chief really did a good job before he left, setting us up to succeed when he leads. Um, with the restructuring that he did, the supervision team that we have in place. Um, he really did a good job setting us up to succeed, um, and it's showing how I think everything is going well and. Hopefully G G says the same, but, um, I think we're doing really well. The chief, sounds like everything is moving forward the way it's supposed to, um. Just Lieutenant Martinez just finished the background. Um, submitted, so hopefully here soon, we'll have, uh, an offer out, I would assume. Uh, but I've been in contact with the chief of the, the. I don't know if I can say his name, but, okay, um, but they, who they offered the condition also. Um, he's, seems excited and. Hopefully, if everything goes smooth, he wants to be around for stampede time, so. That's if everything goes smooth, so, but that seems like the, everything is going the way it should. Uh, let's see, um, we're down one officer, um. Officer Leo Rotis is in the Colorado Reserve, uh, was deployed. Um, so he's going overseas for over a year. So he has been gone about a month or so, give or take, um, so we're down one spot. Um, talked to G G, talked to Shannon, we're gonna end up filling his spot now, um, and then when he comes back, we'll work him back into everything, so. I'll keep him safe over there and get him back here, so. Uh, let's see, we received, uh. Before chief left, he had applied for numerous grants, um, we've received a preliminary award for a, a JAG grant. Um, in the amount of ninety-two thousand. Um, that's gonna be for vehicles and or computers, some sort of combination of that. Um, they'll suppose to let us know here, and actually this month, I believe, exactly where that money, we can spend it on, but. That's how much we've been given preliminary, um, that we can use for those, so that's nice. We're waiting on two other, to hear back about two other grants, and hopefully the next time we have a report, we'll be able to update that, those grants, so. Uh, last thing for us is the stampede. Stampede planning is.
It's nuts.
It's a lot. I know I've been around long enough, and a lot of us guys have been around long enough, we know what goes into it. Um, it's a little different now that I don't have a chief, so having to do a lot of stuff that I didn't think of before. Um, but it's planning, it's coming along good, the Lieutenant Martinez has been tasked with. Her chief doing double before he left with, um, overseeing all like events and things like that. Um, and I think he's doing a big job so far. We do still have a lot of work to do, planning wise and meetings every other day, it seems like with somebody. Um, but things are progressing, hopefully, we'll be ready for stampede, so. Um, that's all I have, if you guys have any questions.
No, there's a, there's a seem any easier not doing it at the same time as karma?
Um, like the whole stampede moving up.
Is it, is there anything different? Not really?
At least, as far as I know, no, um, the planning's all the same, it's just basically a month sooner than we would normally start planning stuff, so.
Are they, with the, uh, concert, who's gonna be here, is that expecting a bigger crowd?
The new chief?
Or, no, the bigger crowd at Stampede.
Oh, I.
Because of who.
Hell no, honestly, um. Uh, Judd is a pretty big name, so I'm assuming we're gonna have a really good turnout. Um, but we always kind of plan for the heavier, five, six thousand as the heavier side, um. So that's kind of the number that we use, even though it's usually a lot, you know, maybe not a lot lower, but it's lower than that, but, you know, we're kind of expecting. With her being the main event or main attraction, I guess, um, it's kind of a bigger crowd, so.
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
And I have heard that ticket sales are going very well for the concert. But Eugene, as far as, um. So the one thing that's new in that is the fencing out there on the west side. So how do you see that in helping or hindering how you guys are planning?
I don't see it really changing, um, because even last year, we had the temporary fencing. Basically where the permanent fencing is now, so nothing really changed except. It's permanent fencing instead of the temporary. Yeah, it, it still so secures off the same areas and things like that, so I don't really see a difference, and even with our planning. Um, we're planning to have the same exact many people that we had at the same places last year, same gates and exits and things like that, so. Um, I think it just looks nicer because we don't have the temporary gates that are falling over and things like that, but. Um, as far as planning wise and things like that, the gates, um, didn't affect the planning at all.
Thank you. Lieutenant. I T.
Good evening, Mayor Council, good to drink your performance, we as per usual. We've had eight Ohioers in this last month, so I just wanted to bring that up because we are near capacity of our Google licenses. I don't believe we will exceed that with everything going on, as some of these are temporary employees, so I don't think we need to worry about going above our capacity anytime soon. We have replaced some equipment that's been killed by the power outage that we've been seeing to face every other week by this point. That equipment is stuff that we've had, uh, spares them back luckily, so nothing out of pocket for our department. Kids Connection faced a pretty big internet outage with the powerages as well. That has been fixed and just to make you aware, it seems like their switch is on the way out as well. So we are trying to preemptively get that replaced, just in case the power has just killed the next time around. We've had twelve systems customized and deployed, so it's computer systems for city employees as our normal business schedule every six years. All those are out and seem to be working just fine, we haven't had any issues with the new systems, and everybody seems quite happy with the new systems as well. We've put office on all the meter computers out of Sky High, so hopefully that'll help them go a little bit more smoothly without people having to bring in laptops or having to worry about having their own laptops. This should just allow Sky High to be a little bit more functional as a meeting center at the same time while also being a vet center. Our Rec Pro software, which is for our rec department, of course. Had an outage where it would not open or work on any machines that had been fixed, it was an issue with an update that went through the server without being approved initially. That's been rectified and they are able to access their things again for baseball season or anything else coming up. Think, I'm not sure what they got going on currently, but I definitely can access it. And Sky High was having issues of not being able to access their cameras or being able to access certain cameras. What was going on there, uh, our contractor came out and had fixed the camera after he moved a camera. From the software just was not recognizing the cameras again for some odd reason. Doing a rescan and reinitializing all the cameras, everything came back out of no problem. Other than that, it's just been general security fixes as time goes on and just trying to prepare for everything in summer and prepare for stampede as well in case we need support out there. Are there any questions?
I do not, everybody, anybody else? Thank you for all you do in the background, bud.
Yeah, thank you. Guess everyone will weekend.
Thank you. City manager.
Open that. Thank you, thanks for. It was a very good trip, thank you. Um, yeah, so I'm sorry, things are a little discombobulated tonight, but. Uh, regarding the theater. And I'm glad both Bob is here and appreciate the pastor coming in to talk a little bit about it. We have had a request from a, from an individual to, to go ahead and just. Purchase it and be done with it, get the city out of it. We've got a little bit of a challenge, um, some conversations were going on then while I was gone and trying to kind of keep up on the emails to see what's what. And they've gone and talked to Jean a little bit about it. But per our own procurement of properties, we just can't do, we just can't sell it. To the first person that walks through the door. We have to post it, we have the process we've got to go through, and if you remember, you know, two and a half years ago. We had some individuals that were upset on the way that the, uh, old city hall was sold to that current owner. So I want, want to avoid that, through the process we've got to go through. And, you know, may the best person win, so, but the challenge. I see in this a little bit is that. We did get the EPA grant to take care of the asbestos. The current person is saying that they don't care one way or about it, that they would go ahead and just take over the, the theater. Good, good for them, that's what they wanna do. But I don't know how that plays into other factors with other potential people that may be interested. And we were, you know, partly because, partly the reason we got one million dollars. Was because we had that project in our plan to address the asbestos. And, and so I don't know how that's gonna impact our grant yet. So we're gonna have to take a little closer look from that aspect. City Hall was, is also on there, so that'll be. Number one, that contract won't even be executed until close to the end of the year. So the timing of all of this is a little bit complicated. Um, Bob's plans right now is that he'll close the theater then next weekend, the end of his lease. I have no plans of saying, nope, let's have another movie and let's just keep doing this. Um, we have not talked to. Any of the current employees that he has, some of those folks were very, um, supportive. Of the theater and very passionate about having it. So we've just still got a few bumps in this that I hope that we can have another meeting this weekend and, and get some of that straightened out. Um, as far as pastor, I've not, at least I haven't, haven't gone through all the emails, but I haven't heard any. Any feedback of concerns and, um. You know, certainly. You know, there's a movie for everybody, so hopefully it can still go on strong. But right now, Boba Licious is still planning on keeping it the front entry as the coffee shop. But right now, Boba Licious is still planning on keeping it the front entry as the coffee shop. And there just will not be any longer having movies. Like. Questions?
I don't have any questions, I'm here to answer them if you guys have questions and, and, uh. Uh, I just, I stand ready to help however I can, even though my lease is ending, so whatever role I can play. To help the city and the community move that theater project forward, I stand ready to do that.
Thank you.
Questions? Okay. We are having a community meeting because it doesn't have to go through the whole proposal process. First and second reading regarding the project to cover up Larriette Ditch. And when I say cover up, so no one misinterprets it, it'll be, um. Um, a giant pipeline through town, the plan is still to go from. Uh, the golf course to the polished beam. From what I understand, staff has been out there hanging door, door, um, knocker. Announcement flight, thank you flyers, uh, all of the residents that have access on the ditch have received a letter. And so we're doing a community meeting this next week, June the twelfth. At six o'clock at Sky High. If any of you guys can, can attend and want to listen in and hear what's going on. Um, you know, all of this is still on the assumption that we get a ten million dollar grant. The grant is being applied for on behalf of the city through the Ann Shute's Foundation. And then they would also be the fiscal agent of the grant, which would be extremely helpful from the city side. And so, um. It seems like there's some misinformation when DJ calls the people back. They're turned around and they seem very supportive, and the idea is then that would become a blocking path or a bicycle path. Would not be utilized for motorized vehicles except for city needs like clearing snow and that sort of thing. And, um. There will be lighting along the way, so it's. Be pretty cool.
So the idea is go from where to where?
The back of the golf course. And then it leads through town, you know, goes through the school and then back behind. Um, Adam Street, back to behind Newcombe and then ends right there at, or that's where we will end it there at. Polished beam on the highway. And then we're.
Golf carts, polished beach.
You know, the, from what I'm understanding, the biggest rompiness is coming from the golf course. And since the golf course is still city property.
Yeah, so. But honestly, if you could pipeline that through the golf course, I'd never drop another ball at an ex canal, that would be.
Well, that and, and the other debris that people throw into the ditch, it'll save on.
What is it, their unhappiness, people walking through there or something? Well, I can see some of that, some point, that's dangerous, because there is literally two holes across that. That canal, but I'm sure where there's a wilderness, where. I mean, there's nets, there, there's things that can be done.
Well, and isn't that when you yell four and every, everyone ducks because they don't know where it's coming from? And, and the other big side is, um, the water conservation piece from evaporation.
Yeah.
So the Larriette Ditch Board seems very enthusiastic, very supportive and, um. And so it, I think it'll be really. And then it would tie into what SLV Go is working on, and that's the heart of the Valley Trail. That will go from Alamosa to Manavista, I think to South Fork. And then eventually they want to take it the other direction, even over La Vida Pass to Trinity. So.
Next year?
Pardon?
Get that all done next year?
Yeah. Like bewitched, just twitch my nose and poof, it's done. So anyway, June twelfth, community is invited, six PM, Sky High Park. Uh, just kind of an FYI, Sunflower Bakery is having their tenth anniversary on tomorrow. From ten to two, you're all invited for free lunch, they're doing some sort of fancy homemade ice cream and sloppy joes and. And so, um, that's going on, and then I just wanted to, to mention. You know, today's the eightieth anniversary of Normandy and. We, Bob Richards had been working with the gentleman out at, at Home Lake, Mr. Blake. And although he wasn't on Normandy, he was at Pearl Harbor when it happened. And unfortunately, Mr. Blake passed away earlier in May. And so, uh, the poem that he wrote about why me? You know, how come he lived and his other fellow soldiers did not? It, we're still working on that, getting Bob is to get it on a piece of granite. And then that will be put in the Faith Heathley Veterans Memorial Park. So, and we're still working on that, pro, um, festival, that'll be July the twenty-seventh. So there's still lots of good things going on.
Okay.
Okay, that's it.
Alright, thank you, Gigi.
Council committee, city commission and council reports. Brad, anything?
Um, no.
Mister Howard?
Yeah, it's too hot.
Second Fana? Mister Grant? And I don't really have anything either, except keeping out for your neighbors, for each other. So we will recess our meeting until the twentieth.
Yes, and, and thank you, Mister Pro Tim. One, one more comment, June the twentieth is the CML conference. And so I won't be here. Councilman Howard won't be here and Mister Farish won't be here. So we'll work hard to kind of make it another light agenda. But it's also kind of a, an important meeting because we won't be meeting then, the next meeting, June's July the fourth. So if you have any questions or concerns, call me, email me, text, don't email me, text me. And, um, can answer your questions.
Alright.
Okay.
Sounds good, I hope everybody has a good evening and a great weekend.
Thank you. Okay.